City of Pacifica, City Council, it's October, I mean, October. It's August 22nd, 2022. Call the meeting to order. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Beckmeyer. And Councilmember Beckmeyer will be arriving soon from the closed session. Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Here.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Present.
Mayor Beer.
Here.
And Councilmember Beckmeyer arrived.
Present.
All councilmembers present.
Yeah, very good. I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatush Aloni people, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatush Aloni people for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all people who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first people and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatush Aloni people. We'll now salute the flag led by Councilmember Vaterlos.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaterlos. Do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, Denise. Appreciate you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Oh, wait, no, Sarah probably has some instructions for our community.
I'll make a few announcements regarding tonight's meeting format. This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public pursuant to provisions of Government Code Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local Comcast Channel 26 or online at www.zidioofacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through Zoom. Press the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when the mayor calls upon that item. For those participating by phone, use star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute once called upon. The clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number of dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting but will be made part of the written record and those received by noon today were provided to council members and posted on the city's website. The format of this meeting will be altered, may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.zidioofacifica.org for any updates.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on to the consent calendar. Do any of you want to pull an item from the consent calendar? Sue.
I just have a question about, I don't want to pull it, I just have a question about number 13.
Go ahead and ask the question now or public comment.
It's about vacating property and my question was, has the city ever done any improvements or paving, et cetera, on that property? And I'm sorry I didn't ask it before.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaterlos, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I am going to see if Director Peterson or one of the city engineers can come on and answer that specifically. And it looks like City Engineer Bautista is with us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Councilmembers, and Bautista, City Engineer. To answer your question, Councilmember Vaterlos, there was no improvements that were done to that, or the city has not done any improvements to that piece of property. So it is as it was for a very long time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open public comment on items on the consent calendar. Again, these are public comment only for items on the consent calendar, which are items one through... Hold on, getting there. 14. I mean, one through 13. So if you have any comments on items number one through 13, you can raise your hand now and we will take your public comment. Hello, Alyssa, do you see anyone with their hands up?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I see two hands raised at this time. First speaker is going to be Lindsay Reich, followed by Christine Bolz. Lindsay, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Hi, first of all, thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. You're probably the first person ever to do that in a city council meeting. Yeah, I am the CEO of Warm Water Wellness and first of all, I just want to thank the council so much for putting, I see our our item on your consent calendar for the Mickelson there people. The reason I wanted to speak during the comment period here is because, first of all, I hope it passes and if it does, I wanted to perhaps add to my request. What a lot of cities, you know, I think at this point we have over, I think we have over a dozen cities that have got, that have supported us at this point with resolutions and letters to setter corporate. And for the cities that have passed resolutions, we've been asking if they could please send their resolution with a cover letter to setter corporate interim corporate CEO James Conforti and to the setter corporate board of directors. If you are willing to do that, we'd be happy to, our organization would be happy to provide you with a sample cover letter. The City Clerk of Burlingame wrote an excellent cover letter, so we've been using that as a template and we have a very specific list of CCs that we'd like for you to include, which includes the Attorney General, our attorney, Joseph Kachet, et cetera. So that's one request. And then my other request is, if it passes, if you'd be willing to do a press release. City of San Carlos, I think it was like a week or two ago, they voted to authorize the mayor to send a letter to setter corporate and they issued a press release soon after that and we very much appreciated that. So, and again, I'd be happy to send you the link to that article and offer any guidance or a sample template of what you could include. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Our next speaker is Christine Bolz. Christine, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Good evening, councilman and staff. This is Christine Bolz. I wanted to speak on two items on the consent agenda. First is item two, the minutes of the July 11th appeal hearing about the general plan. And I carefully read those minutes of my testimony and there's a couple of things that are missing that I think are important. One, I made comments about the existence of detailed landslide maps from 1982 that are in the city records and I would like the record to reflect that. And secondly, my testimony about the council's recent approval of the project at the end of Talbot on a hill with a history of debris flow landslides that were not evaluated in the project's geotechnical report, I also think are important because this shows that we're missing this review when we don't have these maps. And so that's a project that you all recently reviewed that was missing that critical information. So I would like to ask for that to be included in the record also. And then item 13, I'm really confused by the language here and I'm hoping staff can clarify whether this parcel on Hotel Way is now owned by the city or is it privately owned with an easement for the road? And if it is owned by the city, my question is whether it needs to follow the requirements of the surplus land act. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine. Madam Mayor, there are no more hands raised at this time.
We will close the public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I would like to suggest that we pull the minutes and allow staff the opportunity to review the items that Ms. Bolz brought forward and approve the rest of the consent agenda. Because I don't know a practical way to do that without staff having an opportunity to look at in this moment, in other words. I don't imagine a way that we could amend those minutes and approve them. And so I'm proposing that we put them aside, take a look at it, decide what needs to be amended, if anything, and then bring it back.
City Manager.
Yeah, this topic has come up before just about the detailed nature of meeting minutes and I just wanted to remind the council that we, you know, the recordings of meetings have all the verbatim language that was used and the meeting minutes are detailed summary level minutes. So they're not intended to capture all of the verbatim comments that are provided. It's a difficult task. We wouldn't want to engage in updating the minutes here and now during this meeting. So we would need to push it off to a future meeting. But it didn't sound like the claim was that there were factual inaccuracies. What's come up before is that when every detail that's commented is not captured in the minutes, even though those details are captured in the recordings of meetings, et cetera. So I think it's kind of a policy question for the council as to whether we really want to go through that task of, you know, adding back in a lot of details that aren't captured in the current written minutes. Because, I mean, it's just staff time and city resources when the record and the recording already contains all that.
Councilmember Big Stick, did you want, I mean, Mayor Protem Big Stick, did you want to say something about that?
My comment had more to do with whether or not Councilmember Beckmeyer still is pulling the items. So Councilmember Beckmeyer, are you pulling the item?
In light of the fact that the issue at hand was an appeal, I am pulling the item.
Okay, so, and I have comments on, very brief comments on five, six, and 13 also, but if we're pulling number two, we're going to have public comment on it and Ms. Bolz, if you could have prepared specific page numbers and approximately where the comments you're referencing ours are so that we know where to look. That would be very helpful, I think. I wanted to touch on the question asked about number 13. The impression I got from reading was that the city has particularly not claimed ownership and that we'll be holding a hearing to determine whether or not somebody thinks we should claim ownership and go from there. But City Manager, perhaps you can untangle that knot?
That's accurate about, this is setting that hearing that will be held. But again, I'll turn to City Engineer Bautista regarding details.
Yes, that's correct. So, you know, the county did not accept the dedication and this process is to publicly vacate any interest that we have, that the city has on Hotel Way. So we are just going through the formal process of publicly vacating an easement right away.
Thank you for that. I want to get to Ms. Reich's comment regarding number six about sending the cover letter and perhaps doing a press release. And is that something that can just go through staff? Do you want council to deliberate on that for a moment? In which case, should I pull it if you do want us to deliberate on that? Or is that something that can just be handled? It sounded pretty good to me.
So is that a question for me?
That's a question for you or any other person, staff member.
One thing I would say is certainly transmitting the city's action via letter would be a normal course of action. What would be different is I think issuing a press release, but we can do that as well. You know, the one difference being the pool is not in Pacifica. So this is sort of tangentially related. It serves citizens from Pacifica. But if other cities have issued press releases, we can do that. We, you know, really, really focus press releases more on very city-specific items. So council direction, or I can just work with the mayor about whether we do that piece of it or not. But certainly the letter, and we would welcome any language and CCs and stuff that are suggested to transmit the letter.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And then very briefly on number five, I learned two things I did not know before reading number five. One was that the city still uses fax machines apparently, which I found on page 91. Levity. The other one being that we will in short order be missing our dear Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department Director, Michael Perez. And so it was with a touch of sadness that I read that particular item, but we'll have until, I believe, December to properly lavish Mike with more praise. So I'm sorry to hear of our loss. And with that, I'm happy to move that we put forth the consent agenda minus item number two.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, with the motion by Councilmember, by Mayor Protem Big Stick and the second by Councilmember Beckmeyer for the consent calendar minus item number two, roll call vote starting with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And consent calendar minus item two passes.
Thank you very much. We will now have our discussion about item number two. Do we have any questions before I open it to public comment? Hearing none. We will open a public comment on this item. Hello, Alyssa, thank you for your help.
Hi, it looks like there is at this time by Christine Bolz. Christine, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Hello again, this is Christine Bolz and thank you for the question, Tiger. So this is regarding my testimony, which is on page, packet page 26. And I just want, would like to remind the council that, yes, we have had this discussion before and I understand that staff can summarize public comments on issues, but that appeal testimony is different and that it should be accurately reflected in the minutes. So I actually typed up my notes from my presentation for the appeal and I'd be happy to share those with the city clerk to make her job easier. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine. There are no more hands raised at this time, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, well, close public comment and bring it back to council. Council questions? Councilmember O'Neil.
I have a question for Denise, City Attorney. Hi, do, what's a common practice, because I know you guys do a lot of cities? Are the notes we keep very typical for what a city needs legally? And two, are appeals to the city council, the minutes of those different than the general minutes?
So first question, yes, there, most jurisdictions do sort of a summary rather than, they do not do verbatim. It's a summary or some cities do just only, they only record the action in the minutes. So I would say the majority do summary minutes, some do just a recording of the action that was taken. And then in terms of whether appeals are more important than other items, I mean, I'd say that you just pick a process and you'd be consistent with that process. It's not that one item is more important than another, but you just typically find a process that works for the city and be consistent in that process.
And Councilmember O'Neil, if I could add just to clarify, so we have the nomenclature the same. The type of minutes that Pacifica does are very detailed, almost verbatim, very detailed summary minutes. So when Assistant City Attorney Bazano refers to summary minutes, that's a much more general summarization and action minutes are just the action. So I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page for how much more detailed we do minutes compared to other jurisdictions typically.
Well, I would just prefer we keep the minutes the way they are. If there's part of the record, but I see, is that something that's an option, Denise?
But it wouldn't be, they, she could certainly send in her comments or edits. Anybody can send in their comments or edits to the minutes as a public comment prior to the meeting and that would become a record of the meeting. But the minutes are the ones that are adopted by the council. So unless the council makes an amendment to the meeting minutes that are before you, then there wouldn't be any changes.
Okay, so I would just, I would just keep it the way it is.
Comment? I'll go ahead and say a comment. And I personally think that in this case, it's okay for us to change the minutes just because it is an appeal. And I think that was one of the reasons why Councilmember Beckmeyer asked for it to be pulled in the first place. So I think we should accept her changes to the minutes. Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Well, just, Madam Mayor, if I may. We would need to see what those amendments are before the council makes any decisions about agreeing to the amendments.
That's what I was asking for, is that whatever the proposed changes or what is perceived to have been left out or in whatever way isn't accurate or reflecting the recollection of Ms. Bolz, that she submit her comments, as she offered to do, that staff take a look at it and then bring back if any recommended changes, then we can put it on to our next agenda item, our next consent agenda to approve those minutes, whether as amended or as they stand at that time.
So continuing this item to allow for review of the minutes?
Right.
Do we have a motion to vote for that, right?
I move that we continue this item to allow for a review of the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, with the motion by Councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by Councilmember O'Neil. Okay, with the motion by Councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by Councilmember O'Neal. Roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vodderlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Going to be moving on now to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communication. Provided, however, that during the oral communication portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. So we'll give it just one minute. If you would like to make a public comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight, please do so. Maybe we can just give the instructions one more time for how to do that. Thank you, Sarah.
For those joining via Zoom, use the raise hand button to raise your hand. For those dialing in, star nine will raise your hand to indicate that you wish to comment for items not on the agenda. Star six for those calling in will allow you to unmute.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, Alyssa. Madam Mayor, currently two hands raised. First hand is by Suzanne Moore, followed by Paul Toa. Suzanne, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Thank you, Suzanne Moore, for the manner again. I remain concerned about our timeline presented by city staff on August eighth for our housing element. I recall that Mary Beer had the foresight and fall of last year to seek interest in a community workshop, and I'm sorry we didn't act earlier. I suggest we consider an immediate citywide mailer to educate the public on the importance of the housing element and community engagement. A mailer seems the only effective way to reach all residents, including those with computer access challenges. Specific outreach efforts to special need populations like our farm workers, disabled individuals and very low income households is required by AB sixty-six and the fair housing mandate. Although there are technical challenges, it seems that community meetings should provide hybrid options for in-person and virtual attendance. I suggest early utilization of HCD consultants, tools and examples to previously certified housing elements. We can use successful plans as templates for our draft. Jeremy Levine from Housing Leadership Council warns, quote, "HCD has approved very few housing elements after their first draft. Unless Pacifica presents a truly exemplary housing element, the city's draft will also likely be rejected, which could extend this timeline significantly further. No matter what, Pacifica is in a tough situation," end quote. "We know that it's important for our housing element to be certified. There are significant repercussions if we fail." Megan Kirk could be Deputy Director for Housing Policy California HCD lists penalties for noncompliance that range from loss of permitting authority, financial penalties and potential lawsuits. Let's take this time to create a draft that includes mandated fair housing expectations, including anti-displacement actions, preservation of existing low income housing and construction of moderate to very low income housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Madam Mayor, it looks like that second hand was lowered, so there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. We will close public comments and bring it back to council communications. Who would like to begin?
I'll say I don't really have anything to report. Mine are still on summer break, so my report's free.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Neal. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Vodderlos.
Okay, I attended the Fairmont Homeowners Association Board Meeting. And I requested firemen to come and speak about keeping wildfires away from your homes. And that was a really a great thing. He suggested some things that they could do up there. They also talked about the fact that at one point the blue dots, which everyone calls them the blue dots, in the street were provided by the Fairmont Homeowners Association for past pavings. And they want to make sure that the blue dots will still be in the street after this next paving. I'm in a statewide group about electrification. I attended that meeting. A lot of interesting information. The recovery coordination for COVID met, which has been quite a while. They said there still is definitely COVID out there, which we all know, and continue to take your good precautions and wash your hands. There are about fifty people in the hospital each day. So it's the numbers are really small compared to how it used to be. And they are no longer counting positive cases since there are so many at home tests. They talked about grants, and they still do have a lot of money for grants, especially for childcare. So look at San Mateo County Strong if you're interested in grants. I rushed over to Grocery Outlet where we handed a check to Pacificans Care at Grocery Outlet from from Grocery Outlet to Pacificans Care, and they earned, I believe, thirteen thousand dollars that went towards four community groups through Pacificans Care. What a great thing. I attended both the Republicans and the Democrats meetings with council candidates. Some council candidates at one and and all of the council candidates at the other. Um, I attended the Fog Fest Committee, so everybody make sure it's in your calendar. We're gonna have a big parade. All of the council members are gonna be in the parade. That might be a first in a really long time. So congratulations, everybody. Had another meeting with Kevin Mullen, and he talked about sea level rise. He often we hear sea level rise, and they talk about the bayside, but he I said something about the coast side, and he said, oh, yes, I am in favor of protecting the coast side from sea level rise. So there was a lot of, he had other items, but that was the one that was most tied to Pacifica. So that's it for me.
Thank you so much, Sue. Okay.
So I had intended, and I told the mayor I would have notes for you all tonight, which I do not have. Sorry, I need an extension on my homework. To give you a flavor of the Coastal Commission meeting that I attended last, not last week, but the week before in Calabasas. I've traveled, I'll just say that I traveled there to participate in what's called the Local Government Workshop. Five or six times they've met. It's hard to know because of COVID time, it stopped. But it's intended to be an in-person meeting with representatives, all of the coastal commissioners, the representatives from the Coastal Cities Group, which is part of Cal Cities, otherwise known as the League of Cities. And then also the Counties Group. So there were representatives from Ventura County, Del Norte County, Monterey County, and Santa Cruz County and Santa Barbara County, as well as I attended. And the Chair of the Coastal Cities Group, Eric Friedman from Santa Barbara City, Councilmember Friedman, Ed Spriggs from Imperial Beach, and Ed Waggy from Pismo Beach. And we had one other person who was from Fort Bragg, who attended by Zoom because they have a fully integrated hybrid meeting format with the Coastal Commission. So I will give specific updates on what was discussed at future council meeting. But I will say that the meeting was productive and positive, and it was exciting for me to hear Mr. Spriggs speak because he's been there at every single one since the inception and of the Coastal Cities Group. And has worked then on another group called the Sea Level Rise Working Group. And he was very positive about the the tone and the conversation that went on. We had two presentations that I'll be giving you more specifics on, one from a city, one from the county, a county in terms of like a case study of working through their LCP. And what were the challenges? What were the successes? What were the the rough spots? And where does it stand? So I'll have that information, and I think what would be useful is if I write it up for you in advance so that you have something to look at before the meeting. And then maybe we could have more of a question answer, and I could fill in some gaps for you. Does that sound reasonable? Very well. Thanks. And then, yes, I attended the Democrats' meeting on Saturday. And I attended the Coastal Conservatives' meeting, whatever date that was, the morning after I got back from the Coastal Commission, the tenth, I think it was, I want to say. And the Pacifica School Volunteers' Board Meeting. And did not make it, unfortunately, and I do apologize for that, to the Economic Development Committee meeting that was rescheduled for last week. So if you were there, Mayor, if you can give an update on that, we appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As always, I reflect on Ukraine for as long as they will be fighting for their freedom, and so I do so now. I attended a meeting with Councilmember Beckmeyer and PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy Staff, and City Manager in regards to reach codes. And it sounds like we'll be beginning our our reach code update somewhere around the September area with the intention of being done with our new construction codes by the end of November. I think we spent some time discussing that for new construction, we're gonna do it as a part one. And then existing construction reach codes, because it's going to be a bit more complicated, we'll do it as a part two. And there discuss reach codes in existing construction that kind of range in a spectrum from this is very simple and easy for everyone in our community to do versus we probably don't want to touch that in our community with a ten-foot pole. And so we'll do that as a slightly separate process to be able to keep things simple until it needs to be a little bit more complex. So I'm excited that that process is getting underway. I attended the Historical Society fundraiser where the Aloney Cafe served us lunch. And Councilmember O'Neal, you did not do nothing over the last two weeks because I saw you there. So it was I I was working that day, so I got in as quickly as I could and didn't hear the full story. But what bit of the story I heard was, of course, uplifting to my heart to hear from the native people. And the food they ate, it occurred to me if I could eat that way every day, it was both delicious. And I felt more nutrient going into my body than I probably had in too long. So it was a really fabulous event. I actually met briefly with Charles Stone, who's running for county supervisor in another district. He's a council member out of Belmont, so it's strengthening a relationship on the one hand. From talking to a contemporary, things like the housing element come up. And so I'm able to get perspective from a different city and how they've been dealing with it and what we can expect as we go through our process. So it was a really fruitful discussion, I thought, as I got to know him a bit better. There was an emergency preparedness meeting I attended. They discussed the San Mateo County Emergency Safety Event, which was successful. Like always, I was reminded to recommend Zone Haven to everybody. If you don't know your zone, please look it up. And that's part and parcel with San Mateo County Alerts, SMC Alert System. Just get the text directly to your phone. I love that it tells me if there is major traffic problems somewhere, which it frequently does so that I I can do things that are as simple as planning which way I'm I'm driving on any given day. So I highly recommend signing up for that. The members of emergency preparedness are getting really excited to do their booth at Fog Fest, which is the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of September. So Fog Fest excitement has begun. And of course, the free COVID testing site on Francisco Insalada is still open Sundays, Tuesdays and Thursdays from eight AM to eight PM. So if you need to get a test, get a test. I had a brief meeting with Tina Wehrmeister. We caught up. She's doing well and says hello to everyone. I attended the City Democrats Candidate Forum on Saturday. Afterward, there was a cigarette butt art can contest judging event that I was able to go and see. Thing, but I got to enjoy watching the cans being judged. And Katrina Rill with Jackie Spears Office, her district director, was there, so I got to have a nice conversation with her afterward. I should mention our friend from Enlow Park, Ray Mueller, was at the candidate forum and the contest judging, so it was nice to check in with him as well. And while not in Pacifica, apparently every third Saturday, there is a community dance at the Pine Ranch in Pescadero. And so I happened to find myself there, and it was very wholesome and fun. And I I recommend it to anyone. It got me out of my comfort zone as I was found myself in a community dance suddenly, and it was a really good time. And yesterday I had a quick meeting with Paul Toda in preparation for our next item. So that's that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neal.
Hey, Duncan, you made me feel guilty because I did do a couple of things. I went to the Pacifica Democrats' meeting. I went to the Pacifica Conservatives' meeting. Also went to the Aloney Lunch and everything. I hope to make, although I don't know if I will, is this Saturday at ten AM, the San Mateo County Historical Society is having a history walk at a very unknown state park on the peninsula. And it's Burley Murray, Burley Murray Ranch State Park on Higgins Canyon Road at Hapoo Bay. And what's unusual about this is that it has a type of barn, which is rare in California, that is dug into the side of the hill. So the cows can walk to the second story up the hill, and the others can walk on the first story. And it's about a two-mile hiking thing, hiking trail, you know, to get to the barn. And they're gonna go through the nature of this and talk about the inhabitants, et cetera. Also, on Saturday, being you mentioned Pescadero, there's gonna be a presentation on the history of Pescadero. And apparently, they actually have some a website where you can go and view some of the buildings that are torn down, but are gonna be but talking about that, and that's at eighty-stage road, Pescadero, one o'clock. You're supposed to RSVP ahead of time for these, so yeah, I guess I did do a couple of things. And let me just see if that was that. Oh, and this is an interesting thing, and I don't know, I'll forward it to the council. But as you all know, I'm on LaFco. And one of the presentations that's gonna be coming up in LaFco is how the county is going to do what process the county is gonna be using to update their Rena numbers and what they're gonna be doing. So when I get the link for that Zoom meeting, I will forward it to City Manager to forward to everybody. If you if you're interested in how the counties, it's a lot of the counties' housing, you know, is all an unincorporated area, which is basically they have to drive through us to get to their, you know, that area. So I will forward that when I get it. And I have gotten several emails. I'm aware the planes are flying. However, I'm not getting a lot of cooperation from people as to why. So I will get back to those people that have written emails to me about the noise from the airport. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, so I I've been a little busy. I had a meeting with Seth Miller, who's with our Cal Cities Peninsula Division. And I've been recruited to serve as the at-large member of Cal Cities Peninsula Division Executive Committee. And so the ballots went out to all the mayors this past week, and that'll be announced in Long Beach at our conference down there. So that's exciting, another opportunity to serve. I attended the project review panel for one I attended the project review panel for One Bay Area Grants. Um, one of our Pacifica applications actually made the cut, which is a really big deal because a lot of the other applications were like BART and same, like really big, um, projects. And so I was super happy to see that they made the cut for our panel. Then the next, um, step is to be approved by MTC. Um, so I'm really excited about that. And that's, uh, it makes it makes it really good to be part of that. So when we put ourselves out there and we're able to like score applications and represent our city, things can happen that way. So I'm excited to do that. Um, I went to the Save San Pedro Mountain event. Um, Ray Mueller has also been spending a lot of time with all of us in in Pacifica, so he was also there. I went to the Aloney Lunch. Thank you, Councilmember O'Neill. Um, I did attend the, um, Economic Development Committee Special Meeting, which was a very efficient one-hour meeting where they approved their budget and their work plan. So, uh, Julia Carter, I just wanted to give you a little warm fuzzies and some snaps. Good job for that. I attended the Open Space Meeting, and it was very interesting. They had a presentation, one of the members gave a presentation on 3030, which was an executive order by President Biden to conserve at least 30% of the US land's freshwater and 30% of the US oceans, um, areas by 2030. And so there's going to be some work done around the region and in San Mateo County around that. So it's really exciting to have, um, that information shared with us to see where it can take us. I attended the Pacifica School Volunteers' Meeting. I attended both the Democrats' and the Republicans' Meeting. I got to judge the buckets for the Beach Coalition. They're those big giant buckets that are painted, um, for cigarette butts. It was, you should have seen all the amazing artwork, like, wow, it was very hard to judge. So I'm glad I wasn't the only one. Um, I also met with, um, someone from Tree City Pacifica. So I think that's it. Um, and we will go on to our city manager, um, city manager, oh wait.
Sorry, city manager, I also met with Gail from Tree City Pacifica. Forgot to mention that.
Okay, city manager Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mayor Beer, Mayor Protem, Big Stick, and council members. I have two announcements. Uh, one is, uh, some sad news, and then one is good news. Um, I'll start with the sad news, and I just want to acknowledge that last week, the city lost, uh, one of our active current employees, Pius Garcia, suddenly and tragically passed away last Thursday. And I know the mayor will be saying more at the end of the meeting and adjourning the meeting in Pius's honor. Uh, Pius has been with the city for 25 years and worked in our facilities maintenance division. So he's really well-known by all the city employees over those 25 years. So it's really a tragic loss. Um, while, while we'll be adjourning this meeting and the mayor will make comments at the end, I just wanted to say upfront that we're going to do more of a robust, uh, uh, memory, uh, and acknowledgement of Pius Garcia's service at the next city council meeting. So, uh, city staff is, um, and and the council as well, uh, are very saddened by the loss of Pius, and our thoughts go out to his family. Um, the, the good news item that I wanted to share is that, uh, many probably saw we had the official launch of our Shop Pacifica e-Gift Card Program. And I just particularly want to call out because there are great financial incentives for the community to participate at this point in time. And and that information is widely available and available on the city's website, and we'll continue to put it in the Connect with Pacifica newsletter. It was also featured, uh, last week on, uh, on, on the news, on KPIX. So, so that was exciting little segment a minute about this program on, on the news. So it's an exciting program, really focused on uh, people taking action to support our local small businesses, which is the, uh, the business, uh, community that Pacifica thrives on. So I wanted to mention that, and that concludes my communications.
Thank you. Thank you, city manager Woodhouse. Okay, we're going to move on. We have, um, a public hearing. Agenda item number 14 is a public hearing on proposed ordinances repealing and replacing Pacifica Municipal Code, Chapter 12, Tree Preservation, and Chapter 14, Maintenance and Preservation of City Trees. We have, um, the Director of Public Works, Lisa Peterson, with us tonight, as well, as Tina McNeen and Allison Steer from DB Resource Group.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Beer. And good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Uh, yes, we have our DA, DA Resource Group here tonight, um, along with, uh, Sam Batista, our Deputy Director for Public Works. And we are asking the council tonight to introduce an ordinance to repeal and replace Pacifica Municipal Code, Chapter 14, which is Preservation of Heritage Trees and, I'm sorry, 12, which is Preservation of Heritage Trees, and 14, which is Preservation of City Trees. Next slide, please. So starting about a year ago, the city conducted a very robust public outreach and information gathering with the public regarding desired tree ordinance changes. Um, in the spring, DA Resource Group and city staff developed a community outreach and benchmarking study report that was released. We had a study session that was held on May 23rd, 2022, with the council to discuss that benchmarking study report. We held another study session on June 27, 2022. And at both of those study sessions, there were changes that were made to the tree ordinance related to the public input and also, uh, council comments. Next slide, please. So council may remember at that meeting on June 27th, we, the study session, as an attachment to the report, we had a red line that showed changes that were made based on the May 22nd study session comments that we had received from the council. Also, um, items that had polled very strongly with the community. And I did go into those, uh, during the discussion at that June 27th study session. So I'm not going to get into great detail on that again today, since we did already go through that. But I did want to very quickly highlight what those changes were again, since that meeting was at the end of June. It's been a little bit. So just, uh, for your recall, one of the items that was changed at that time was that we have a new definition for heritage tree. We have a new definition for protected tree. It allowed us to have tree protection plans that are being acquired from developers for any kind of tree impacts. For protected trees, um, that are pruned at greater than 15%, that will now require a permit. We also will not be requiring a permit for any dead or dying tree removals. And we are requiring a two-to-one tree replacement for protected tree removals. Next slide, please. Additionally, we're going to be using the industry standard for measuring a tree diameter at 54 inches above the ground. An arborist's report will be required for removal of protected trees. We will be providing a city website notification for removal of those protected trees. We'll be disincentivizing illegal tree removals and establishing a tree fund. The ordinance now allows for in-lief fees for trees that are not replaced on-site. It also allows for emergency removal of trees presenting an immediate risk. And, uh, finally, the city can now collect a full replacement cost for illegal tree removals. Next slide, please. So at the meeting on June 27th, the council did request some additional changes to be made to the ordinance, and those were made. And you can see those in the red line that is attached to your report. So one of the items that was changed was the definition for grove of trees. So grove of trees was revised from the definition saying 20 trees of any species that are six inches diameter or greater down to, uh, 10 trees of any species that are six inches in diameter or greater. And now, in addition to the arborist's report, we will also be requiring an ISA tree risk assessment form for all protected tree removals. Replacement trees will need to be 1.5 inches in caliber or greater and, and at least a 15-gallon tree. No tree related to a development that has a building permit in will be able to be removed until all permits have been approved by the city. Now, one exception for that would be for the plant, that the planning director can issue a grading permit for developments that have a building permit in for reasons of health and safety. If the, uh, the changes also have clarified that businesses will be subject to penalties for illegal removal. And we also added additional information to Chapter 14 to match Chapter 12. These included, included things such as, um, uh, allowing for the arborist, um, tree risk ISA form. The, have the tree replacement size be the 1.5-inch caliber or greater, and at least a 15-gallon tree. The website noticing and the two-to-one replacement ratio. Next slide, please. One thing I did want to mention is there was a drafting error in the ordinance um, regarding the repealing of log, the logging ordinances. So staff is recommending that we add Section 8 to the ordinance. It states ordinance number 636 and 637, which are the logging ordinance, shall be repealed in their entirety prior to the verse reading. Uh, as council, uh, will remember, we, in, um, the entire time we've been talking about this, uh, the goal has been to repeal those logging ordinances because all of that information has been included now in Chapter 12, the Preservation of Heritage Trees, because, uh, it is a much easier place for the public to find the information. So that's why we do need to then go ahead and repeal those logging ordinances, since we now have all that information in Chapter 12. Next slide, please. So for the next steps, at the next council meeting, we would anticipate coming back to council for adoption of the ordinance. Again, that would include that language I just discussed. Um, that would be a part of Section 8. And once the ordinance has been adopted, we would begin Phase 2, which is our Urban Forest, Land and Vegetation Management Plan. Um, part of this would be updating the city's tree inventory, completing tree mapping, developing a policy on tree risk management and risk reduction, developing a tree permit exemption based on risk for fire. Additionally, developing short and long-term management plans, a tree canopy study. And we anticipate, uh, some of our key partners in this will be Fire Department, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, and the Emergency Preparedness and Safety, uh, Commission, along with other folks that we've been working with, um, on this part of the ordinance. And that's the end of our presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions council may have. Again, we also do have our consultants from DA Resource Group, Tina and Ally, and we have, uh, Deputy Director Batista here as well.
You, Director Peterson, appreciate you. Um, Mayor Protem, do you have a question?
I do have a question. Um, so packet pages 427 and 450, we'll start with 427. And I don't know if anybody else had this anomaly in their document or not, but on my packet page 427, um, where Section 2 Environmental Analysis apparently should be there, it's kind of in the last paragraph of Section 1, and I don't necessarily see anything listed under Section 2. So I don't know if anybody else had that, or if it was just my program doesn't show it properly, but I wanted to ask. I meant to ask ahead of time, too, and I just didn't find the time.
Can you say that one more time? I was having a hard time finding the page. Packet page 427.
Packet page 427, and I'm using a PDF reader on my pad, so I'm not sure if it's my software or not, but Section 2 Environmental Analysis. It's, it's, it's over the last paragraph, as I'm seeing it, of Section 1, like they're merging in a weird way, and I don't see really anything listed under Section 2.
I think it's probably on a different page.
Yeah.
Because that's not on our packet 427.
No.
You probably have PDF page 427, which is, might be different. So maybe you can give us the headings or something?
Yeah, like the heading.
Sure. So it's the first page of, um, Attachment D, page number one, and it's at the bottom of the page.
I just assumed that that was the heading for the paragraph that it's on top of, because I see it exactly like you do.
Okay.
But that's how I assumed, and I could be incorrect.
And it's environmental analysis, so that makes sense. I just read it in sequence, and so it didn't occur to me to look at that way. And Sue, did you have a similar thing on packet page 450, PDF packet page 450, um, page 24 of Attachment D, if you're following along?
Let, hold on one sec.
Actually, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, Big Stick, um, it's on packet page 424. I'm, um, I think everybody's, um, uh, it looks like the, um, the page is, uh, out of, oh, I don't know if you can see that, but, uh,
Yeah.
But it's, it's, um, it's out of format, but, um, it does have the, um, environmental analysis on there.
Okay. And like I said, I, I had a similar overlap phenomena occur on, um, page 24 of, uh, Attachment D. Apparently our packet page is still aligned.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Okay.
Very bottom.
Okay, so I didn't know if it meant anything or not. I couldn't really read that paragraph. It didn't bother me too much, but I wanted to follow up.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah.
If I may, I just would point out that the environmental review analysis is also contained in the staff report. So just to be clear, that the one in the staff report is the applicable environmental review.
That was my only question for the moment.
Anybody else?
I have some questions, but I would prefer to hear public comment first.
Okay, sounds good to me. We can open up public comment, give a little bit of time, and Alyssa can if anybody's got the hands up.
Yes, it looks like we have two hands raised at this time. It's like four now. Um, the first hand is going to be by Irene, followed by Gail Schumacher. Um, Irene, if you can unmute yourself to speak and state your full name for the record. Thank you.
There you go. Hi, uh, yeah, my name's Irene. I, I guess I don't quite, uh, understand. I, I just want to know if like invasive, uh, eucalyptus, uh, are being protected because, uh, you know, like I have been doing a lot of volunteer work and and, and one of the big thing is that eucalyptus is a, is a very fire hazard's tree. So it would, it would be, it would not be a good idea for us to try to protect any invasive plants like eucalyptus and others that were planted a long time ago. Uh, we need to replace them with, uh, more, more, more native plants. And, and actually, Monroe cypress and Monroe pine are not really native of this area. So, so that, uh, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Our next speaker is Gail Schumacher, followed by Paul Toto. Gail, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Um, thank you. My name is Gail Benton Schumacher, and I am speaking as a member of Tree City Pacifica. We are very impressed with the latest version of the tree ordinances. There are great strides in meeting the purpose of preserving and protecting our urban forest. We're especially pleased that protected trees are defined as 12 inches in diameter or greater at DBH, similar to other cities, and that a grove of trees is defined as 10 trees. Although we are happy with many, many things, we are requesting a few changes to the ordinances. We recently sent a document to council listing these changes. In Chapter 12, under definitions under protected tree, we request that it be specified that a protected tree is 12 inches or greater at DBH. And that invasive species are not protected except for groves of trees, and as the director may deem otherwise. We feel that groves of trees should go through the permit process to be sure that developers do not remove hillsides that might cause erosion or flooding. In chapter 14, we are requesting it be clear that city trees meet the same criteria for removal and replacement as other protected and heritage trees. In other words, to remove a city tree, the city will meet the criteria listed in the ordinance, have a qualified arborist report listing reasons for removal, and apply the same mitigation requirement of replacing trees at a two to one ratio. Tree City Pacifica was formed in part years ago after we learned that the city planned to remove 250 trees and had no plans to replace them. The city's general plan recommends the adoption of a canopy goal to grow our urban forest. Two to one replacement of all protected and heritage trees moves us towards that goal. It has been nearly 40 years since the tree ordinances have been updated. It could be another 40 years before it's done again. Let's be sure that the intent of the ordinances is clear to future citizens and staff and that we all work together to help our urban forest thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Gail. Our next speaker is Paul Toda, followed by Kai Martin. Paul, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Thank you. Again, my name is Paul Toda, and I'm also a member of Tree City Pacifica. First, I'd like to praise you all for ensuring that violations for individuals and tree companies are now clearly defined and include both fines and fees. Well done to everyone involved. I just have one request, that the annual Arbor Day tree planting be included in chapter 14 of the Heritage Tree Ordinance. Those of us at Tree City Pacifica are already planning our fourth annual event scheduled for November 12. It would be wonderful if the city's support for this tradition is codified in the ordinance. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kai Martin, followed by Cindy Abbott. Kai, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much for letting me speak. So Kai Martin, I also happen to be with Tree City Pacifica. And I'm so glad and happy about the work that you guys have been doing at the council, the city, Public Works, and the Davies Resource Group. I really appreciate the two to one replacement ratio across the board with one and a half inches and or 15 gallon trees. So I think that's a great addition. And the request I have is for this council and Public Works to, you know, and the city staff to consider how we can help protect the trees that do get planted, both largely on the city property. So something like an adopt a tree program to help care for city replacement trees. That's something that San Francisco's done, Garden Grove. There's a bunch of other cities in California that have done that, where people can either contribute financially to a tree fund to help defray the costs for our urban canopy. Or people can adopt trees, specific trees in parkways, medians, and other places. You guys have all put into place a really cool adopt a landscape program. We've been I've seen all the adopting corners on Palmetto, and people are taking I see businesses and also individual families taking care of, you know, things like lavender bushes and what have you. So it seems like it would be natural to also help make sure that the trees that the city helps plant or other people help plant could be adopted by families as well. Be a pretty low cost way to help maintain those trees. So I would urge you to consider that as a part of your thoughts. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kai.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cindy Abbott, followed by Lucia D'Amio. Cindy, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Good evening, everyone. This is Cindy Abbott in West Shaw Park. And I'd like to thank the council, staff, the consultants, and members of the public for their time and attention reviewing and providing comment to update the city of Pacifica's heritage tree ordinance. This has been a really long time in coming, and it's been really gratifying to see this move forward. Like some of the others who've spoke before me, I'm asking the city council to consider what I think are very reasoned updates to the language that have been presented to you by Tree City Pacifica. This includes that very small change to chapter 12, section 40102, purpose that adds in accept groves of trees to that section about trees that are not protected. I also think there's really important things that need to be considered and reviewed when we're talking about a large number of trees and how that could impact hillsides and maybe cause a lot of unintended consequences with removing trees. So I think that should be go through a more thorough process. Our collective trees need to be held to the same processes and standards throughout the city, regardless of whether it is a quote city tree or a tree on private property. Our trees didn't say I'm going to be planted on private property versus city space. And a lot of our city trees are amongst the oldest that we have here in Pacifica. We all have a responsibility to our environment and to recognize the part that trees play in curbing the climate crisis. For fairness and equity, the city needs to be held to the same standards that its citizens are. So thank you for considering that. That is in the following chapter 14. And again, I really appreciate your time. As Lisa shared, though, this is just as Director Peterson shared. This is just the beginning of then the next steps in this process to understand the urban canopy and all of the next things are going to take place. So a really good milestone here to be at tonight, but a lot more work to do and look forward to being part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Alyssa. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Who would like to begin? Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Beckman.
I'll just start by asking a simple question of staff. Did you receive the email that Tree City sent in? I saw, I think Lisa's name and Sam's name on the email. I don't think I saw Kevin's name. So if you saw it, please let us know, and whatever response you have to it initially will be helpful, I think. Thank you.
Sure. Yes, thank you. We did see it. Yeah, it was, you know, good comments. You know, generally, what I was able to do is go through and kind of outline where ultimately these things were covered in the ordinance already. However, you know, for example, the grove of trees comment that came up. I mean, under grove of trees, it does define it as any species, so that would mean an invasive species as well. But we, you know, we did talk about this a little bit last time when we were going through the ordinance with the council. And I know that there were some areas that that you were more comfortable with things being repeated. And, you know, so that, of course, is is fine as well. What I would say is there were a couple, there was a couple areas in section, in particular, section four dash 14.03, where there actually was a typo, and it does need to be changed to, say, four dash 14.06, as was brought out by Tree City Pacifica, but it does not need to say then four dash 1407. And then there was a section at the very end in the violations that Tree City Pacifica had asked to be added, which said measured with calipers and at least 15 gallon tree. And I I agree that that was that was dropped and that should be added. The the other elements are things, like I said, they're they're in the ordinance. But if council is more comfortable with these being said again in certain areas to just highlight it, we can certainly do that.
Is there anything you found objectionable in there that we definitely shouldn't do? Because if it all looks kosher, that might be the easy way from our end.
There was only one that I did have a little concern about. And maybe we could cover it with a, you know, a different type of of verbiage. And that was under the four dash 14 dash 06, under removal of trees. They wanted to to get rid of the word undesirable. So in that, it says, the director may remove or cause the removal of any city trees or other plant materials planted in a planning strip or planning easement. If such city trees or plant materials are deemed by the director to be unhealthy, hazardous, undesirable, or causing excess damage to public improvements or city trees. The only thing I was a little concerned about with this is typically a hazardous, you know, tree, of course, is a tree that's going to fall or, you know, hit something, not necessarily a tree itself. You know, by its own identity would be considered hazardous, but we do have trees out there, you know, such as. I'm trying to remember the name of it now. It's it's one of the trees. Hold on. That drops the the balls on the street and people trip and they twist their ankles. And okay, probably someone from Tree City Pacifica will know what I'm talking about. Liquid amber. Thank you. Liquid amber, you know, and twist their ankles, you know, so it those type of trees tend to be really undesirable, and cities do take those down all the time. And I'm sure there's probably other things like that as well. So we would just want to be able to cover ourselves from a pedestrian walking path standard where we're not going to have something, a tree that's dropping something like that, like the liquid ambers that causes people to, you know, fall and twist their ankles and 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 things like that. But we could possibly come up with a different, a different word, you know.
If people are twisting their ankles, is that not considered hazardous at that point, or is that merely undesirable?
Well, I so that's what I'm worried about is, you know, typically, a tree itself in its own, by its own species, is not considered hazardous, but a tree becomes hazardous, right? So I'm just afraid if, you know, it got into a semantics discussion related to it and the city had a liability issue, you know, they may not be able to to take something out. But we, you know, I could also bring Tina or Allison in here. Maybe they have an idea of how we could cover ourselves under that.
Just kind of, not meaning to interrupt, but it's kind of the same vein. What if the tree roots are raising the sidewalk and it's a trip hazard?
Yeah, and so we there is coverage in that. It says, you know, damage to existing public infrastructure, so we're covered on that. I mean, if council feels we're covered under the word hazardous, we could we could leave it. I was just concerned because, like I said, a tree itself, just by its own nature of what it is, is not considered hazardous. But perhaps that's good enough.
I agree with your assessment, Lisa, and I do think semantics and words matter. And I think as a non-arborist, and I defer to our experts, that just from my read and my experience so far in this endeavor, when I hear the word hazardous in relationship to a tree, it makes me think it needs to meet certain ISA criteria to be deemed hazardous, and maybe that's not accurate. But our goal here in doing this work is to, I don't really think it's a good idea to wait 40 years, but to let this document last for a long time and be interpreted by future people who are not necessarily these council members or these. So if, and I agree with, what I wanted to say was, I agree with your interpretation that a tree in and of its own nature is not hazardous. So perhaps creating a hazardous condition or something to that effect that could elucidate what is meant by undesirable. Because I think Tree City Pacifica's concern about undesirable is that it's a subjective term. You know, any tree could be undesirable to some people, you know. And it's just, there's nothing to attach to that definition for the average reader. So what do you think, experts? Do you have a suggestion about how to address it?
And I can throw something out there. I I was thinking that we could also just add something to the end of it says or causing excessive damage to existing public infrastructure or causes a safety concern to the pedestrian path of travel, which is all we're worried about, right, is where, you know, people are walking. If there's if the tree's doing something that could, or we could say, causes this safety hazard to the pedestrian path of travel. But I'll also throw it over to Allison and Tina, see if you guys have a thought.
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor Protem and Council. And I think that and undesirable could mean a couple things. It could be an undesirable species of tree, or it could also mean a tree, a good tree species in an undesirable location, say, right next to a stop sign as as an example. So I think that answers the question, but feel free to ask a follow up if I didn't quite get there. Oh, Lisa, you're muted.
I think we do have some verbiage that covers us, you know, for taking care of, you know, site distance, you know, covering signs, you know, things like that. So if we, if we did just want to add something to the effect of what I said, or if you know, I don't know what what you think about that, Allison, what I mentioned, if that works or if that's something.
Yeah, an additional definition to clarify what is meant there. That would help.
I see. Yeah, so we could do that, too, what it's meant by. You could add a definition for what is meant by undesirable.
So that definition would go at the front under section. Does each section have its own definitions?
Yep.
Four dash 12 dot 02?
Yes.
Right, yes.
Yes, so we could add a definition under there. We could put undesirable tree and put a definition of what that is.
We don't need to say tree. We just define the term undesirable.
Okay.
And so Allison, could you give us the definition that you stated earlier again? That it could be either by undesirable, meaning a location that is not appropriate for the species of the tree, or the species is undesirable for the location, something like that. Sure. Yeah, yeah. So a tree could be undesirable because of the type of tree that is, the species of the tree, and it could be undesirable because it's a good tree species, but it's in an undesirable location. An alternative to that is just to use a defined term of the defined term for undesirable. What does undesirable mean? It means not wanted or not desired because it's harmful, objectionable, or unpleasant. And I think just a general definition would give the director a little bit more discretion in determining whether a tree is or is not undesirable.
And I think that was the concern of Tree City Pacifica is that it would would be more clear if there was a standard, like, you know, through the ISA form or to just remove that word. So I think that's that was a concern.
But that defining the term gives it a little bit more of a narrow parameter. Maybe.
I think what the definition that you just gave a second ago includes unwanted. And that's a subjective thing. The goal here is to get away from subjective and try to have it be for an objective reason, like the creating a trip hazard or whatever, the examples that Lisa gave. the creating a trip hazard or whatever, the examples that Lisa gave, Director Peterson gave a minute ago. So I don't know how you compact all that into one word in this paragraph, but maybe we ask you to do that before you bring it back?
So, so that's the concern, then maybe we strike that term and as least as Director Peterson suggested, just state what the concerns would be that would cause it to be undesirable. Like it's a trip and a trip hazard, or it's located in a loc, you know, the tree species is located in a, an area that is inappropriate for the tree species.
I think that's good.
I'm seeing nods ahead.
That works for me.
That works for me, too.
Sounds good.
Go ahead, Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Okay, so while we're on the definitions page, which on my packet page is four twenty-six, and I think it might be attachment page three, if I'm reading that, those numbers right. In item E, it says diameter or DBH. Could we please have a paren- parenthetical phrase after DBH that says diameter at breast height that defines what DBH is? Because I know we use that term a lot, but I don't know if it's defined somewhere else that I'm not looking at, that it's, and if it is, that's fine, but I just would prefer that it be clarified what that stands for. And then in I on that same page, it's kind of like a, you know, a nippy thing, but where it says, any species with a minimum diameter of six inches in diameter. Can we strike the second in diameter?
Yes.
And then on item N, number one, can we add at DBH to the end of that sentence, twelve inches or greater at DBH?
Sure.
And then I want to talk about this issue on item four, inserting language groves of trees. Tree City Pacifica proposed inserting a phrase after the word except, groves of trees, as the director may deem otherwise. So the purpose of that, I think it's already been stated well by by Tree City people who commented, but I want to just reiterate, the intent here is around not clearing an area just because they're invasive species, mostly from the point of view of runoff and and topsoil disappearing and things like that, if, especially in light of development. So that's the intent. My question is, is there an unintended consequence of putting that phrase into that number four that you can think of that would be, ooh, but what about this? And if so, please tell me.
Well, we'll know, because actually grove of trees right now is defined as any species. So that means any species, it can be an invasive species. So the minute you say grove, it means it can be an invasive species. And and as I mentioned, we can go ahead and, you know, put it again at this location, you know, just to make it clearer.
I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Beckmeyer, what section is that in?
It's in definitions on page, packet page four twenty-six. It's item N, number four.
And Denise, this is the um the email that I sent to you that had the different recommended changes. It's in that email, too.
Yeah, we're sort of just going down the line.
Okay. So I think that's all I have at this moment. Did you have something else you wanted to add, Mayor?
I think there was some discussion about whether the city has to to be at the same standard as a, as a citizen when removing a tree. And so I know that they put that, they put a whole section under B.
Yeah, new sentence.
Yeah.
Two sentences, one sentence.
And so I think we should probably talk about that.
Definitely, because I got from Lisa's presentation that that is covered.
Right.
But I feel like it wasn't clear enough, perhaps, or there's a sense what was communicated to me is that there's a sense that there's a double standard. And I want to clear, I want to air that and figure out if is there a double standard, and if so, how can we correct for that so that it's clear? And again, what are the unintended consequences? That's what I want, I need staff to help us think through.
Yeah, so I think it it is in there already, and they actually, even in the sentence that they provide, it says including criteria listed in E, you know, a qualified arborist report with reasons for removal and F, and mitigation for tree removal, including two to one replacements in in G. So if you look at section four dash four point oh six, and you know, sometimes it's helpful to look at the redline version, so you can see what we added. So if you look at packet page four twenty, you can see that there was something that was added related to this, and it is item C, which talks about the arborist report and also talks about needing to do the ISA basic tree risk assessment. We also have G on that, which is the next page, packet page four twenty-one, which talks about planting a minimum of two replacement trees for every otherwise healthy tree. And then under G, there's also that number two, which talks about replacement trees shall be a minimum of one and a half inch measured with calipers and at least a fifteen gallon tree. You know, however, saying that, I don't think there's any problem with adding this sentence into B if the council wants. All it's doing is just kind of reiterating that these elements are in, you know, those sections that are further down, so I don't think it hurts anything.
And I think we should include it.
I think so, too.
And then in similar vein, on fourteen dash four oh seven, item A, I think it's along that same line, the suggestion to remove the words receipt of and replace with creating or receiving or language that you would prefer to use. Because upon receipt of sort of implies there's only one way that it happens, and that would be from citizens to the city, right? And so I think what they're trying to do and 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 looking for their, the recommendation is broadening that language a little bit in some way so that it would also pertain to city actions with city trees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and we can put their language in there instead of saying receipt of, we can say upon initiating or receiving.
Yeah, there you go, initiating, I like that better. Thank you. See, our suggestion that you might have. Thank you.
I thought it was a lovely suggestion from Kai Martin about the Adopt a Tree program. I'm not sure where we would put that or when we can talk about that, but I sure would be interested in that moving forward. I just thought, I'm not sure if this is where it belongs or not.
Maybe beautification committee could take something up like that.
That was a suggestion, and it, you know, it occurred to me is this council is the one who decides what committees and commissions do.
And we're going to be reviewing charters.
So maybe that's the perfect opportunity to add that in. Now, I see the city manager popping in here, so he might have something to say about that. But I I was thinking that, because it felt like, you know, we can't the council needs to consider if that's an appropriate thing to request or to potentially to have a committee look at, right? And that's kind of where I was coming from on that. Go ahead, city manager, sorry.
Yeah, sure. I mean, just to add on to to what you were astutely observing right there is is the difference between a committee considering a new program versus, you know, writing it into an ordinance or because what, any new program falls to city staff typically. So so even the efforts that the BAC undertakes requires a significant amount of public works staff time to support. And so that's my comment would be, you know, we don't know what kind of staff resources would be involved in in implementing an Adopt a Tree program. It's a fabulous idea. We'd love to be able to do that and support that, but we don't know what the, you know, what the resource demands of that would be.
Then that would be part of of a study session, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, you know, future budget decision, et cetera.
Right, right. Councilmember Vadoas.
The one thing to the Arbor Day, support of Arbor Day, and if we could have that, a support might not be the right word, because then support means paying for everything, so encourage the Arbor Day celebration, something, someone can come up with a better word than I just gave.
Yeah, and if I could chime in on that point, too, again, the the Arbor Day celebration and efforts, the city supports that, but it's not a city program. You know, Tree City Pacifica really runs that, so to write that into an ordinance or a requirement is is sort of a different, you know, if that system were to change or that support system were to change, then it would fall to the city to have to do that, and that has the the resource impacts. Again, fabulous thing to do. We intend to continue to support that, but it's not a city program that we run currently.
What we know is that it's one of the criteria for Pacifica being a tree city, USA city, is have an Arbor Day, put a certain amount of money into per capita into trees every year. And one other thing that I can't think of, oh, a proclamation or some, a resolution or something. And we've done those things, but it seems like each year we come back and we confirm it in a way. And I feel like that's part of the certification process for Tree City USA. So what do you suggest, city manager, we would do to reflect that in city documents, even though it's not a city program?
Yeah, well, so it doesn't need to be in the ordinance, per se. So so in a future year, if we, if if the program, if the if the Arbor Day celebration didn't happen and we couldn't get that designation for that year, but it happened in the future, that's different than it being a requirement of the city to always hold that regardless of budget impacts or resources or what have you. I I mean, it's probably, I I want to ask Director Peterson to, you know, give her thoughts on it. But it's just that, policy-wise, it's the difference between mandating something in an ordinance versus the program that we intend to do and carry out in collaboration with nonprofits in the community.
Yeah, and I think usually that's the point of a non, a nonprofit, once again, institutionalized. Right? At least that's what we always worked on in our nonprofit, so go ahead.
Yeah, and I I would just add in, I mean, we have a, we have a great relationship with Tree City Pacifica. As a matter of fact, there was a meeting today regarding Arbor Day. I actually think it could be really helpful for, you know, all of us to maybe, you know, maybe memorialize it more in an informal policy, just so that we're all on the same page. Because it's, you know, it seems like as you have a new director come in or new people come in, it can change. If we could somehow, you know, memorialize it in some sort of informal policy about, you know, the support, you know, that the city provides, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just not sure, you know, about putting putting that within an ordinance. I guess I haven't really seen that before.
So just as a resolution that we intend to try to keep going forward with Arbor Day, if at all possible, in a resolution instead of in in the policy.
So then our resolution is something we pass repeatedly, city attorney, or is it a one-time deal?
You can, you can pass a resolution and make amendments to the resolution or rescind the resolution. You can make new resolutions, you can do that, yes.
And have we already done a resolution that memorializes Arbor Day?
I don't know if.
Repeat acknowledge, I'm just saying to your, to the top of your head, does it sound like it? Or something we could research if it's already been.
Yes, I think we can definitely.
Done it.
Research that, yes. But I I would agree with Director Peterson and City Manager Woodhouse that that's not something we would typically memorialize in an ordinance.
See, Tina has her hand up.
I just wanted to say this is often a proclamation that's done on an annual basis from the mayor.
Yeah, and it seems like we have been doing that. And Tree City brings that forward to us. I I guess I would want it more memorialized than that. Because what if Tree City forgets one time or something, you know what I mean? And I, I'm going back to the mayor's point about it being institutionalized. And like, what's the happy medium there between not putting it in ordinance and not having it be a proclamation that may or may not happen? I don't know. A resolution sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else that we'd like to suggest? And then how do we move forward?
I don't want to suggest, I just want to say thank you.
We need, we do need a motion.
Questions and comments on the actual ordinance, not other resolutions and stuff. The, looking through this, there's a lot of, there, there's a phrase that keeps coming up. It says, the applicant may be required to provide a plot, plan, or survey drawn to scale depicting the trees and any improvements on the property and or arborist report. Can, I think, you know, you got a guy that just wants to cut a tree down for whatever reason, and having a plot, plan, and survey drawn to scale sounds like it's just, does this somebody, an architect, he has to go to, or who does they go to to get that taken care of?
So thank you for the question, Councilmember O'Neil. This is, this is really geared towards development and specifically for those folks that would be getting a, you know, a tree protection plan in place or somebody who might be taking down multiple trees, but, you know, not to somebody who is just taking down a single tree. And I believe, if I can find the location of that.
Okay, so you're talking about someone that's building or wants a subdivision or something?
Yes, so somebody, somebody's coming in with a building, you know, permit development, let's say, on the property that they're trying to build or the property that, you know, maybe they've got two, three, more than, you know, one property, they're trying to take down, you know, multiple trees to, you know, put in, or they need to protect multiple trees because they're putting in a building on that site. It's to make sure that they're looking at it globally and you know, consideration of all those trees that are on the site. This is not, you know, Joe, homeowner who comes in and wants to, you know, take down a tree that's, you know, in his yard, like one tree. This is, this is for bigger projects.
Okay, and then, so let's say you have somebody that wants to use SB nine or ten, they want to tear down their Lindemar Rancher, and they want to put up four units. Okay, so will that mean they have to go, you know, they may or may not be able to replace all the trees there, correct? And what if, if it's a healthy tree, you're, you know, they have to pay for the replacement of a tree, correct, some of the lumber value of that? You know, they have to pay for the replacement of a tree, correct? Some of the lumber value of that. Is that correct?
So the 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 way that it would work is if someone takes down a tree illegally. They would need to pay for the replacement value of the tree. The way that the ordinance reads for development. It provides the option for the city to ask for that, but it doesn't require it. So it says may, but typically what the developer is being required to do is to the two to one. Replacement ratio for those trees, or they would be required to, you know, pay an in lieu fee. Um, if they couldn't, you know, put all the trees on the on that particular pro- property, their replacement trees.
Okay, because I'm, I I am kind of concerned is we have housing goals to reach. And if you have the, you know, get a tree cut down is roughly. Two thousand twenty-five hundred, and the permit is going to be about four to five hundred, right? And then you're talking about a, um, you know, an arborist report. Last time I think we were told it was around five hundred. For an arborist report.
It was, it was four, four to six hundred, and then we said probably another two hundred for the ISA risk assessment form.
Right, so if you have somebody that wants to put an ADU perfectly legal in their backyard and they have to cut down a tree. We're we're adding to the cost of that ADU. Correct?
That's correct. So if somebody wanted to take down a tree because they were putting an ADU in. Let's say they just want, they want to take down one tree. They would have to come, they would have to pay for the permit, they would have to have an arborist. Report, they'd have to do the ISA, you know, tree risk assessment form. Um, and, you know, assuming it wasn't appealed, you know, they would need to then, you know, take down the tree, which would cost them a certain amount of money.
Uh, Lisa, we're talking about heritage trees, right?
This protected trees, yes. I, when I'm talking about trees, I'm, I'm talking specifically about protected trees, which is anything that is a. Twelve inches in diameter or greater, that is non invasive.
Well, a heritage tree is about the size of a dinner plate, right? Twelve inches. So I'm just, you know. We're adding to the cost of ADU, and if I remember right. Were wasn't there some restrictions in terms of someone adding ADU, what fees we could charge? Was was there?
Well, I believe.
I know that's not your bailiwick, Lisa. I was waiting.
I I believe some of that was going to be discussed during the housing element conversation is is what I understood.
Okay, so the the tree ordinance is going to be discussed in part of the housing element?
Well, I I don't, that not necessarily the tree ordinance, but I know that fees related to low income housing ADUs. Were supposed to be discussed. Um, and if this is something that would be appropriate to be discussed at that time. Maybe I see we have Acting Director Murdoch on board to help me, so maybe he can jump in.
Thank you, Director Peterson. So Councilmember O'Neill, I think you're referring to development impact fees with respect to accessory dwelling units. There is a limitation on the city's ability to impose development impact fees on ADUs of seven hundred fifty square feet or less. And so that came up in the context of various other public works development impact fees that were recently considered by the city council. Um, as to the housing element discussion, uh, it's not necessarily the case that the heritage tree ordinance is intended to be discussed during the housing. Housing element update process, but what must occur is a consideration and analysis of constraints to the production of housing. And the costs imposed by regulatory mechanisms that the city might have on the books. Including the heritage tree ordinance are fair game to be considered. Uh, for the potential effects they will have on the ability to produce affordable housing. And so it's in that context that all of the city's programs and regulatory requirements and costs that are levied. Uh, might be subject to discussion and consideration as part of that process.
Okay, so then we may be, if we pass this tonight, we might be revising it. Because of the fees associated now, or is it the fees? We charge or fees because we dictate, you know, an arborist report or something like that?
So the city should consider the full scope of the impact of its programs on housing production. And it may be required to consider what steps it can take to minimize those impacts for those issues that are within its control. So how much third parties charge for their arborist services or their ISA reports, for example, is beyond the city's control. But what is within the city's control perhaps is adjusting fees or waiving fees. When it relates to the production of affordable housing. And so not to commit the council to any particular policy outcome now. But it's those sorts of discussions that need to be taken, uh, undertaken in the context of. How we're analyzing how our policies affect the ability to produce affordable housing.
Okay, okay, thanks. And then next is, I know replacement trees shall be the same species. And I I was just curious is, um. Do we really want to replace Monterey pine with Monterey pine? Because most, if you drive around town, you can see a lot of the Monterey pines are dead. Okay, they're diseased or whatever. And do we want to put, remove one and then plant two more? That in ten years, you're going to be dealing with Monterey pine cancer again.
Where are you reading that? Because that it's the same?
On page five, six of the, um. Of the ordinance, it says replacement trees shall be the same species as the tree removed. Or species of similar mature stature unless otherwise specified by the director. So I'm just, you know. Do you want to replace what is a tree that's very susceptible to to disease with the same tree? I don't know if we want to give the director guidance on that or not, you know?
I think another example is when the tree height gets problematic for our lines and. Um, power lines and such, and the city has gone to lengths to determine species that should be planted.
That was actually on my list here too, because what if the neighbor's tree covers up their solar panels? And, you know, one neighbor wants to cut the tree down or major pruning. But the arborist says, well, no, it's a healthy tree, you can't do it, but we're then saying the other guy can't use solar panels and we're supposed to limit greenhouse gas. So I think, I don't know if that can be addressed in it in some way. And another question probably for planning. It says here, all decisions and deadlines regarding the building permit will be suspended until the final decision regarding the tree permit has been made. Why do things have to run consecutively and not concurrently?
Well, I think uh, my understanding of the intent of that provision is to make sure that. The question of the heritage tree permit issuance is determined before the final action on the building permit. The city is typically hard pressed to further restrict building once a building permit has been issued. So I think the idea here is to try to ensure that a building permit is only granted for development that may lawfully occur with respect to the heritage. Tree ordinance, but Director Peterson can perhaps elaborate on that.
Okay, well, maybe, so you're just saying the building permit issuance, you will still do plan check, architectural brunt or whatever. Right, is the actual building permit you're talking about?
Well, that's the only step in the process that has any meaningful effect. So an applicant. Um, could potentially continue, but Director Peterson, can you explain the intent of that provision?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I I think the intent of the provision is there was, um. Concern from the community and at the study session on the twenty-seven. There was a lot of, I would say, robust discussion related to how do we. Um, address the issue of people who come in, uh, you know, apply for a building permit. Then, you know, get a grading permit, impact trees or cut down trees. Get their building permit and then never actually, you know, do the, do the building. So I I think there was a a question on. How do we protect trees and not have somebody just come in and cut them down from property? Um, and then they walk away from the project without ever even getting their building permit.
I support that. I, yeah, I hate all these half-built projects like fast or. Um, on there. Okay, so I I'm clear on it. I just wanted to be sure that. He applies, if somebody applies for the building permit, they can also apply, should be apply for the tree permit. They can then walk over to planning and submit an application to start the planning process and review the application. At the same time, so that, you know, it's not so consecutive, concurrent.
Right, Councilmember O'Neill, I read that provision to mean that the planning department can continue to review and process a building permit, but it cannot make a final decision whether to issue the permit. Until the the corresponding heritage tree uh, issue has been resolved.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you. Um, another item here is whether, yeah, that they could look at is. Whether the requested action is necessary for the economically viable use of the property. And is that, I think, do we, should we put something on there according to the zoning of the property? So that, uh, um. You know, there's cases in town where people want stuff vacant because they say they could have a Christmas tree lot there. So it's economically viable?
Sure, Councilmember O'Neill, I'll just share uh, my firsthand experience in administering this particular language, which exists in the current heritage tree ordinance. Um, I think it's a difficult criteria to objectively apply. Um, one example that occurred recently where I have had to invoke this provision and considering a heritage tree permit is that. Uh, there was a relatively large, uh, single family, uh, zoned parcel. And the s- slope of that site was such that building at the rearmost portion of the property would give the greatest view. However, it was economically feasible to construct a home closer to the front property line in a manner that would not. Require removal of the heritage tree permit. And it was my opinion, looking at the amount of area available to develop. In the applicable zoning regulations that it was possible to economically, uh, develop the property, but without removing the heritage tree. Um, I think the vast majority of cases are probably not like that. Most lots are going to be in the five thousand square foot range and. You know, a heritage tree with a big canopy and significant roots. In probably, you know, most situations may reasonably need, uh, to call for removal of the tree to to have economically viable use of the property. But that still is a is a fact specific and a site specific investigation. And having that criteria, I think, is relevant as a counterpoint to some of the other. On the list.
Okay, okay, and then, um. Let's see. Okay, now, I didn't see it in the ordinance, Lisa, but I wanted to clarify, okay? If a house, you know, given the number of trees. In your slideshow, you said that, and I want to be sure and put right on this, that. Staff will be coming back with an ordinance to for fire hazard zones. You know how they recommend, what is it, a fifty or a hundred foot zone around a home? Clear zone? Is staff coming back with some sort of guide ordinance for that? You're muted.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember O'Neill. Um, yes, so what we had talked about doing was coming back. With a tree permit exception based on fire risk. It's something that we've seen in other cities. So that was the thought, that we would be developing a tree permit exemption process. That would be based on fire risk.
Okay, and will that, I mean, because some of the trees, I'm sure that are fire risk, especially the, you know, the leaf. There could be a grove of eucalyptus that is a fire hazard that would need that. But there, you know, they would then be a protected tree. Will that cover protected trees as well?
So it would mean, um, once you have a tree permit exemption, it would mean that, you know. That tree is exempted from from the permit, no matter what type of tree it is, it would be exempt. Ultimately, we can. You know, develop this exemption, permit exemption, uh, based on what the council would like. But, um, in having, you know, just quickly looked at a couple other cities, it seems like they're basically exempting. Any permit requirement for any type of tree within certain type of circumstances. That, um, areas of very high fire risk. And we would have to, you know, have that discussion as we move forward. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of. Moving elements and what that means and what that looks like. Um, so it's just, it's just, um. You know, a general statement of what we will be trying to do, but there's no detail behind that yet.
Okay, okay, because I am concerned at the number of houses that probably will need some sort of. Break or something, you know, for trees to create the safe zone. And if the, that needs to be. An expedited process, so to speak, because if they get a notice that their house insurance is being canceled. Uh, but they might be able to mitigate it if they were to cut a tree down or something before, what I mean, so I'm just concerned about that. Um, the tree fund. How is that going to be handled? What is it going to be used for? Or exactly, we developed and come back to council?
So that, you know, it's in, it's in the ordinance specifically. I don't have it right in front of me, but. It's, you know, for increasing, it's like, I'll call it the top of my head. And maybe Deputy Director Batista can find the exact language, the ordinance, or or one of our, um, consultants. But it was something to the effect of and used for increasing, um, tree canopy. I think it was a tree maintenance work. And, um, um, there, there are a couple other, oh, okay, I see Tina's raising her hand.
Purchasing, it can be used for purchasing, planting and maintaining trees within the city. Acquiring, maintaining and preserving trees within the city to remain in naturalistic state in perpetuity. Performing and maintaining a citywide tree inventory. Educating red residents and developers on the preservation, care, maintenance, benefits and values of trees. Within the city of Pacifica and supporting programs for the purpose of increasing the tree canopy within the city of Pacifica. Ask approved by council.
So does that include staff costs if we, if it, you know, because there is going to be a cost of. Staffing that, like a full-time equivalent, half-time equivalent?
I think that's what the maintenance piece is about, Mike.
Right, right, but it's a staff person to do that.
Yeah.
Is that charged, is is that coming from the general fund, that person, or the tree fund?
It could come from the tree fund, as I understand it.
Okay, okay.
Right, Lisa, and?
So I I would probably, um, also pull in City Manager Woodhouse for this discussion as well, but, you know, as we know, ongoing. Uh, positions usually need to be taken care of with ongoing funds, but certainly could be used, uh, you know. For consultant services or one time, but Kevin, did you want to jump in?
Sure, I guess what I would offer is that, you know, the tree fund is likely to have a s- small amount of money. And it's essentially year to year, one time money. So funding a permanent position from that would probably not be feasible, but as the ordinance is written. Those funds could be used to augment, uh, to use hourly staff in the maintenance activities, et cetera. So, you know, it could be used for personnel, but not on an ongoing permanent basis.
Okay, and, um, I would like us to see some sort, uh, I would also like to see our somehow address. The solar panels and as people get more and more solar panels and some sort of guidance or or something for. Trees that get so tall, they block solar panels. Uh, Lindemar Rancher is a one-story building and there's many trees down at Lindemar. That, you know, are on the, to block the sun or whatever for, um, the neighbors. And I think that, how do we deal with that? Um, maybe a list or guidance from the city of trees that don't reach more than twenty feet tall or twenty-five feet tall. Something like that. Um, I think would be, uh, I think something handy to give to. To citizens, so.
In relation to your earlier point, Mike, about replacing with the same species, is that what you're saying?
Well, I just kind of on the city website, have a webpage, and maybe if the guy applying for a permit, we give them. we give them a paper copy of the recommended trees because, and I know that this was done several years ago, even for the microclimates in Pacifica, because let's face it, my climate where I live is different than the climate up in Fairmont or Manor. And tree, recommended trees that might not be more than 20 feet tall, 25 feet tall, or whatever, so that you're not blocking the neighbors' solar panel or whatever technology might be coming up next. So.
And and thank you, Councilmember O'Neill, that's, we are going to be putting a few things on our website, because of course, we're going to be posting for significant pruning or tree removals now. We also are going to be posting some recommendations on pruning, as we talked about previously at the last meeting. So we could certainly put on there as well some recommendations for trees that only grow a certain height, you know, to help with, you know, covering solar panels at a future date.
Right, and just general aesthetics, so that we don't have a lot of the, I mean, I look out my window, I mean, I see several trees that are like 90, 95 feet tall, and that's storm damage potential down the road, too. I am concerned, though, about the city removing trees and having the same, like, standards and stuff that a private person would have. Because if we get these, the government is passing out grants to cut down eucalyptus, especially down in Okinawa, they got that grant, and I think we even got the grant last year. And if, and do we want the money used to cut down fire hazards or to go for arborist reports and stuff like that? So if we have a grove of eucalyptus and we get a grant that we can cut it, how much of the grant is going to be spent getting arborist reports, et cetera? I am concerned about that. Did I leave you all speechless?
Well, I I can jump in on that and say that Councilmember O'Neill, I think you identify a very astute policy issue, and that's the trade-off of public resources compared to private resources and how they're utilized for public benefit, in this case, you know, fire safety. And I I think when you're considering the conditions under which the same requirements are applied to private tree removal applications. So let's say someone wants to develop their property, and there's, you know, financial gain, and there's certain conditions that apply compared to public benefit applications where trees are removed for fire safety, and there's 10 trees that you can't remove because that has to go to the other, you know, arborist report or conditions. I can't, I'm just using those hypothetical numbers, but just the policy observation is is very appropriate here.
Well, I think the public benefit argument goes both ways. And I think speaking on behalf of many in the community that we hear from, they would say the public benefit is enhanced by keeping the trees. So I think what we're, what Mike brought forward that we need to wrestle with is when we're talking about hazardous trees, or potentially hazardous trees, or trees in a high fire zone, we don't want to walk away from a grant or be compelled to give it back because we couldn't get an arborist report to determine if that, you know, grove should be cut or not. So when you, this is what I mean when I kept saying unintended consequences, when you carry things out to their logical extreme, we're, there, we've heard from many citizens about concerns about eucalyptus, and there are grant funds around to remove them. So how does, what are the implications of these policy conversations we're having right now around groves of trees? If a grove of trees is eucalyptus and we want to cut it down or cut it down in a safe and responsible way, so we don't have erosion? So I'm going to stop talking and let Tiger go, or Mayor, I'll let you be in charge.
Yeah, Director Peterson had something to say, and then Mayor Protem.
Yeah, so I I was just going to say that, you know, this is definitely something that was going to be considered with this phase two related to, you know, the tree permit exemption. So once there's a tree permit exemption, it would not require a you know, it would not require an arborist report, it would not require the ISAT, you know, risk assessment. So that is something that we can come back with in this next phase and provide a recommendation on how to manage that issue.
But in the interim, I don't know what the estimated date of you coming back with chapter two. But in the interim, this is the ordinance that would stand if there was a grant that came up in the, you know, in the state budget filtered down through the county. Is this an obstacle for us to get a grant like that? I don't know.
Well, I I would add in that when, you know, we did get this grant through the county for Cattle Hill, you know, that was a big area with a lot of trees, and there was a environmental review that was required in, as part of that grant for that many trees. So I I would say if it was, you know, a very large grant that were taking down a lot of trees, we're probably going to be required to do some sort of environmental assessment of all of those trees before we can take them down. But I don't know, Tina, do you have anything you want to add in, like for, you know, taking down a large amount of trees? Number of trees typically would that, you know, require environmental impact assessments? I know it did on our cattle hill project.
It could very well, if it's a large project, then it would be something you would have to analyze, for sure.
I I guess I would ask the question, like, for example, in the cattle hill project, even though it underwent SEQA review for that project, that doesn't make the determination necessarily about what permits are required, or our arborist review is required if our ordinance says that. So I think the question being considered is if it's going to take a year and a half to two years to develop the next phase of the ordinance, and I don't know the timeline, you know, we don't know the timeline yet, but and in the meantime, we're eligible to get grants for eucalyptus tree removal. What is the exemption or exception that can apply so that, so that we don't have to undergo additional undue costs to implement that program?
Hazardous?
You want to say that again, Councilmember Wallace?
Hazardous conditions, fire hazard? That kind of condition to get those grants for for tree removal for fire hazards?
Is fire one of the criteria on that ISN report or INS, you know, the report I meant, you mentioned?
No, not, not typically.
No.
But you could also just file an emergency exemption, you you could have an emergency exemption to allow for those type of removals under those conditions.
And there's other examples that were brought forward during public comment in the back of the valley, Mike, you may recall, about, I think it's the pitch pine, am I saying it right, pitch pine tanker? Where we have trees losing their limbs in the backyard, I think you recall that comment, so.
Right down behind Park Pacifica, around Yosemite and Big Bang, yeah.
In my view, that one goes under the hazardous one that Lisa was talking about before, that and dead, dead trees and hazardous trees, those don't have the same constraints. But it's not specifically for fire.
But now, an arborist report, does it look at a grove? And say, yeah, the majority of these trees are dead? Or do they actually do an analysis on each tree? And if, let's say, somebody has two or three trees, can they just give us a narrative about all the trees, or is it each individual tree?
Yeah, thank you for that question, I'm going to throw that over to Tina.
Sure, an arborist report could include a grove of trees and and actually consider it as a grove of trees, but it would still describe the overall condition of that growth. Or it can also describe individual trees and apply to individual trees, so the answer is all of the above.
Okay, so.
On the situation.
If we have a grove of healthy eucalyptus under the ordinance as it's present now, we could not cut them down, probably, right?
Unless one of the exceptions applies, that is correct.
Mayor Protem, did you have something?
I was trying to, I think most of what I was trying to say was kind of already addressed, but I I guess what's still kind of sticking in the back of my throat is under, under circumstances in which these groves of eucalyptus aren't protected the way that they apparently are in this ordinance, what steps are normally taken to ensure that erosion doesn't occur? If we were to chop down a large number of them? You know, I'm thinking about driving over to the Devil's Slide, the Tomlantis Tunnel, and seeing all of those eucalyptus on the hillside. And the point, as I, is well taken, as I'm I'm envisioning all of those eucalyptus trees cut down, well, then what happens to the hillside? And so like, this ordinance notwithstanding, if we were to clear-cut for the sake of eliminating the fire danger that I can't help but think about every time I drive up to the tunnel, what would happen to the hillside in such a circumstance? Or would we, without the ordinance, need to replace trees with other trees in order to stabilize the hillside? How how would that work?
Well, I I can, I can jump in and say, with a significant-sized project like you're talking about, which would, you know, be for fire, fire safety, like was done on Cattle Hill, you would have an environmental review. And in that environmental review, i- in other words, it's not a decision about, don't cut down all the trees because erosion will occur. It's a, here's the project, and here's how to safely do the project, and here's what the mitigation measures are related to this project, so that erosion and landslides don't occur in cutting down the trees. So I think there's a, there's a difference between saying categorically, you can't do that versus it needs to undergo project review, environmental review with appropriate, you know, project implementation, so that it's safe to do.
City Attorney?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, I think it's important to to note what we're talking about, and I think what Mayor Protem's question went to was just the exemptions that Director Peterson had previously spoken about that are going to be coming later. So I just was trying to make sure that we responded to the question that I thought Mayor Protem had asked.
So, oh, hi, Christian.
Hello again, good evening, council members. I did also want to offer, in the various criteria that are provided in this ordinance as drafted for considering removal, one of them is whether, excuse me, the topography of the land and effect of the requested action on it. It's a very short sentence that I think has a lot of meaning directly to your point, Mayor Protem. Steep site, significant tree removal proposed. It requires a permit from the city under the ordinance as it's drafted, before whatever other exemptions might be crafted. That's a criteria to be considered. And in the event that the analysis and consideration of that criteria concludes that there may be a potential slope stability impact, for example, even though the project on its face was intended for perhaps fire hazard reduction, that's one of the criteria. And the ordinance would also provide the director the opportunity where adverse consequences might stem from the removal to impose mitigation measures, including replanting. So I think the ordinance already addresses those potential safety considerations with its own provisions as drafted. Everything City Manager Woodhouse said about some companion SEQA process that may or may not be required for a particular project holds true as well. But the ordinance, as it's drafted already, with its own provisions internally, I think provides those criteria to be considered and the safeguards and the authorities to impose steps to protect against those unintended consequences.
So getting back to what I think the original question was, if we are given a grant to eliminate some of the fire hazard that eucalyptus presents, with everything just discussed, is there something in this ordinance that gets in that way? And if so, where specifically should we be looking at this point to tweak that, so that if a grant arises, we're able to take advantage of that? A lot can happen over two years. And I, the point is really well taken by me that phase two is essentially to answer the question that's before us. But it would be nice to have kind of a stopgap here as appropriate, so that we can get to phase two without having to worry about a grant for wildfire mitigation and then have our one and two at the end of the day.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that question, Mayor Protem. I guess I would probably try to loop in our Assistant City Attorney here. Having worked on the ordinance, if there is an appropriate location in here, Assistant City Attorney, where you think we could put some language in that could help? Or maybe even, even, I guess I could throw this also to Tina, the resource group.
So I just, Director Murdoch just cited some good areas where there are some language already existing about erosion control. Is that something that?
I I don't think erosion control is the question. It is the remove, under this present ordinance, a heritage tree has to get a arborist report and the hazard report, and Tina said fire is not one of the considerations in that INS report or IRS, whatever, whatever that's called, okay? And if we, and last year, several million dollars was passed out, of which we were able to get some of the money that we were able to cut down hazardous trees. So it isn't so much the erosion report. That'll be covered by the environmental review that Kevin mentioned. But is there something in this ordinance that prevents us from applying for a grant that, so we can mitigate or cut down trees that may be hazardous? Whether or not they're a protected tree or not? Do we have to go through an arborist report for the entire grove, the entire, the trees, individual trees, or whatever?
Well, and perhaps it might be good for us to direct staff to come back with some information about that with the changes that we're already requesting, or maybe they don't have an answer for that right now? What, what do y'all think?
We could, yeah, I I mean, we want to, so, so we want to have the, the ordinance, I mean, this is the ordinance hearing, right? So I I guess.
Could, could we? I was just gonna say, could we have a statement in there that simply says that, you know, a four out of five vote of the council, you know, this provision can be waived for fire mitigation funding opportunities, or whatever.
Councilmember O'Neill, that's, that's sort of the direction I was going is, is, is to to include in here, wherever it would be, a temporary exception that relates to projects focused on fire safety removal until, and the temporary nature of it is until the the permanent future exemptions are identified. Uh, so that in the intervening years, we don't get, uh, we don't lose the opportunity to get some significant grants for eucalyptus removal. Um, and and maybe just have a focused exception someplace. That would be the concept. And maybe we can uh, come up with that language right now that would be acceptable to the council. Because the the few, the next phase of the project is going to make additional amendments to the ordinance, correct? Assistant City Attorney Bozzano, I mean, that will be the outcome of of the the next phase. And Director Peterson, we will do, we'll need to make additional ordinance amendments.
So you're talking about the the tree permit exemption process that Director Peterson was talking about?
Yes, and so right now, I think the concern of the council, if I'm hearing it correctly, is we don't want to lose the opportunity for significant project funding and grants that can help with fire protection in our community. And 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 that money, additionally, the money that we could get, we want to maximize that for project implementation rather than um, you know, arborist costs or not even being able to do the project. And so how do we, how do we include a a broad temporary, not not broad, but a focused temporary exception so that we don't run into that problem?
There are a couple of hands up. Unless Denise, did you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, I just would say that temporary, you know, I'm not sure what you mean by temporary. We could include an exemption certainly that specifies that, um, you know, we can write up language that says that the, you know, um, city fire mitigation projects shall be exempt from the requirements of whatever specifications of the of the process that you want to exempt city fire mitigation projects from. Um, but I don't know how you how you are proposing to add a temporary provision, I guess.
Yeah, all I meant by temporary is that that this is sort of placeholder language until we finish the next phase of the project, which develops and defines what the exemptions are in the future related to fire safety.
So in other words, we would just have the the exemption, but then at a future date, we could uh, amend that exemption.
Yes, yes.
Understood.
So there had been a couple of hands up. Tina, did you wanna say something? And then Councilmember Beckmeyer and actually Councilmember Vodderlos had her hand up at some point, too. Go ahead, Tina.
I'm not sure if this addresses everything, but it does say that a tree removal permit shall be granted based on public nuisance or risk, which I would think that fire would might be. Um, I would obviously defer to the city attorney on that decision, but I would think that that might cover wildfire risk as well. That doesn't really address whether an arborist permit would be needed in or an arborist report would be needed in those instances, which is maybe something we need to clarify.
Yeah, so I think it just depends on how, you know, does the council want a blanket exemption for those projects? Or do they want to exempt just the arborist report or some other aspect of the process? But I I would, I would, I would prefer a more specific exemption for fire mitigation programs. Or up, you know, however you wanna word it.
I like the fire mitigation.
Well, I think to add to uh.
Okay, I think so. Councilmember Beckmeyer, do you wanna go ahead?
Um, I'm thinking section four dash twelve dot oh nine, emergency tree removals. Potentially could be, we could have another paragraph in there. Or maybe retitle it, emergency tree removals slash fire mitigation or fire risk reduction or something like that. Because I think that's what we're talking about here ultimately. And we do want to make it specific. I agree with you, City Attorney, because the whole point of having groves of trees and all of that was to really look at it and to put limitations around specifically, I think, in the in instance of development. But what we're talking about here is a different issue. It's fire risk mitigation or fire risk, fire hazard reduction, fuel load reduction, all of that. And Mike is absolutely right. Money's there. We don't want our policy to be in the way of us being able to meet that important goal.
I also have a question in terms of if we apply for one of those grants, if we have uh, an amendment in this ordinance that leaves discretion to the council, does that, is that a roadblock or does it need to be, yes, this is an exemption, council can't change it or whatever? Did you understand what I meant by that?
I think so. Just put, so you're suggesting Councilmember O'Neal putting language in that says something like this, you know, would be decided on a case by case basis at the discretion of the council?
No, I was wondering is if we are, if we do a case by case, you know, discretion, is that impediment or do you need that council has as a matter of policy for fire mitigation? This is exempt, you know, that kind of thing.
Right, I would say if the if the will of the council is to include an exemption, we include the exemption specifically.
Okay.
And then, of course, you know, future councils can always amend that section of the ordinance, repeal it, make changes. They're not bound by the ordinance just because we've adopted the ordinance.
Okay, but a grant funder would look at it and say, okay, they're they're okay, and this is an impediment. Okay.
Councilmember Beckmeyer, your hand still up? Do you wanna say something else? No? Okay, well, there's a lot of discussion, and so I want to make sure that's very clear, um, moving forward. So when we have a motion, it's it's, everything's clear. So how do you?
A motion to continue this or a motion to?
I don't think so.
I I understood that we had, uh, we had coalesced around an exemption. Um, and so if we can find the location that we'd like to place that exemption and um, agree to the language that would be in the exemption, then I think we could move forward. We have already a list, Director Peterson is keeping a list of changes. So we would just add this to the list of changes and uh, if council is inclined, we can make that um, make that motion to introduce the the ordinance with the uh, changes that have been discussed tonight.
Mary, I was just gonna maybe make a suggestion, be staff is kind of scattered in a lot of Zoom boxes. Do we want to go to the next item and and let them work on this and then come back to it tonight? Does that make sense?
I I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
But, yeah. Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm I'm actually ready to make a motion, I think, if we're, okay.
Okay.
Um, and before making that motion, I I've been wanting to say um, uh, all day that um, it it's been a really good collaborative process with the community that's brought us here. And it's it's been um, kind of a big heady topic to get through. But I feel like we got through it collaboratively and that we all worked well together. And that's um, very uplifting to me after um, the the last fiscal year we've had. And I'm hoping that this begins a new fiscal year of getting back on track of working with our um, working with our our po- our population and our our partners in the community. So that having been said, and thank you for everybody, all the work you've been doing. Um, I move to waive the first reading of and introduce by title in ordinance of the City Council, the City of Pacifica repealing and replacing chapter twelve, preservation of heritage trees, and chapter fourteen, maintenance and preservation of city trees within title four of the Pacifica Municipal Code and finding the ordinance exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act Sequel with amendments as discussed.
Second.
And uh, so we have a motion and a second, and I just want to bring this up. Uh, so I would just propose to add a totally new section uh, for, you know, somewhere after four twelve oh nine, so maybe four twelve ten and all of the other subsections uh, sections following that would have uh, be renumbered. That um, ex- excludes um, fire mitigation programs um, conducted by the city or undertaken by the city. That would be exempt from the requirements of the article of of the the chapter.
I moved.
And all the other changes that have been uh, listed, uh, you know, tonight. Maybe um, we can get Director Peterson to read that list.
Um, sure, so let's see, it was on section four dash twelve point oh two definitions. We would, uh, after one at the end, we would be adding at DBH. Um, in that same section, four, number four, we would be adding groves of trees and right before, as the director may deem otherwise. For uh, section four dash fourteen point oh three C, this should should read um, the director shall have the authority to remove a city tree pursuant to, and the section should be four dash fourteen point oh six. And let's see, under section four dash fourteen dash oh six. B, we're going to remove, um, sorry, we are going to add at the end of the section, a sentence that says, in order to remove a tree, comma, the city will meet all requirements.
No, no, uh, Director Peterson, I don't think that's what we talked about. We talked about striking under under the term undesirable. And then we talked about adding um, language saying that if the director has discretion to um, uh, remove or cause removal of any city tree that causes a trip hazard or is a species in a location that creates a hazard.
Okay, sorry, I thought that we had come up with a definition for undesirable.
We decided to strike that.
Okay, so if that's the case, then we would add, and I thought you had actually come up with the, what we were going to add, Denise.
I just read that into the record.
Okay. But then also, we are adding at the end, this this other sentence, right? In order to remove a tree, the city will meet all the requirements of a permit listed below, including the criteria listed in E, parentheses, a qualified arborist report with reasons for removal in F, parentheses, and mitigation for tree removal, including two to one tree replacements in G. The next section four dash fourteen point oh seven A, we are going to be removing the word receipt of, and instead we're going to be adding initiating or receiving. In section four, um, fourteen point oh eight, violations penalties after replacement, uh, and number two, after replacement tree shall be a minimum of one point five inches. We are going to be adding measured with calipers and at least a fifteen gallon tree. Unless otherwise approved by the director. And I believe that was the last one I had.
And did you add, Director Peterson, did you include the addition to uh, the ordinance of section eight in your list?
Oh, I did not. I did not include that. So also, let me include that. Thank you for reminding me. We need to add a a section, section eight is to be added to the ordinance that is stating, quote, ordinance numbers six thirty-six and six seventy-three in uh, parentheses, logging ordinances shall be repealed in their entirety, close parentheses. And now that's all I have, I think.
Thank you for your guidance there, City Attorney. Appreciate it.
So that's the motion.
So I have that motion by Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember Ba- Vodderlos. Call the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vodderlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And item number fourteen, as amended, passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. Really, it was a nice way to collaborate with our community. I I agree with that. It's very refreshing. All right, let's move on to our last item of the evening, which is a consideration item, a direction to Pacifica Voting Delegate regarding Cal Cities twenty twenty-two annual conference resolution and proposed bylaws amendment. We have City Manager Kevin Woodhouse to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Beer. Councilmembers, I have a very uh, brief presentation on this. As you know, annually, uh, at the Cal Cities Conference, previously called the League of California Cities, on Friday, there's a business meeting and in some years, there are resolutions to be considered by membership. Uh, and uh, as well as potentially bylaws amendments. This year, there are no resolutions that have been introduced. So the uh, there's some bylaws changes. And the purpose of this item is to give the voting delegate, which is Mayor Beer and uh, Mayor Pro Tem is is the uh, the backup voting delegate for the Friday meeting, to give them direction on whether or not to support the bylaws changes that Cal, that are that are being recommended. And uh, very briefly, as the staff report indicates, um, I guess the way I would summarize some of these bylaws amendments is to be implementing some changes that advance the uh, Cal Cities diversity, equity, inclusion uh, goals for their board. And so one, uh, there's some, you know, particular detailed recommendations. But uh, first is to formalize oversight of the Resolutions Committee by establishing a second vice president as the chair of the committee, while retaining the present authority to appoint the vice chair of the committee uh, to ensure a more inclusive nominating committee by adding a committee member appointed by the Cal Cities President from among the caucus board directors and one additional committee member appointed by the Cal Cities President from among the at-large directors for a total of thirteen committee members. To clarify that unless the board establishes otherwise, Cal Cities President appoints the Chair of Board Established Committees and other various technical corrections. So those are the recommendations, um, and that completes my report.
Let's see if we have any public comment on the item. Any public comment?
Madam Mayor, there are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Alyssa. And she went back to council, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I was reading over this last night, it almost occurred to me to think about critiquing one of these amendments. And then I thought better of it. And uh, I don't really have anything particularly to add, except it's the end of the night. And it occurs to me that since um, our our residents in town, of which five are actually still on the call at this point, have presumably never been to a Cal Cities Conference and can't see what this looks like. Uh, last year was kind of more interesting because there were a couple of lobbying topics being discussed, where in this case, it's just amendments to bylaws, which is every bit as boring to my sensibility, at least as anyone would think. But it's really amazing to be in this room where there's representatives from uh, almost every city in California. But it's really amazing to be in this room where there's representatives from almost every city in California. And then there's somebody at the head of it orchestrating this meeting where everyone's voting on something as simple as these bylaws. And as I'm looking at the list of some of the people who are still on this meeting, you know, you can see what we go through to take votes at any given moment with five people. If you can imagine what it's like to take that vote with hundreds of people on something as simple as bylaws, it really is a rather remarkable thing to behold. And so I just wanted to say that because it's the end of the night and I don't figure there's much discussion past that observation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we direct the voting delegate to a yes on all these items.
Second.
With the motion by Councilmember O'Neill, seconded by Councilmember Vodarlos, start the roll call vote with Councilmember.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure we took public comment.
We did.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vodarlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. So as City Manager Woodhouse mentioned earlier, tonight we will be adjourning our meeting in the memory of Pius Garcia, who was a City of Pacifica building maintenance worker for over twenty-five years. He worked in the City's Field Service Division of Public Works. Pius lived in Daly City and was married with one son. His job as a building maintenance worker took him throughout the city and he interacted with many staff members in numerous departments throughout his twenty-five years of service. He was respected and loved by those who knew him and will be greatly missed by his public works family. We will be remembering him more formally at the September twelfth City Council meeting. I'm leaving as a joke.